Hello. Sorry. Good evening and welcome to the regular San Bruno City Council meeting of March the 12th. Calling it to order, roll call please.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Here.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar is on an excused absence with prior notice, and Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. And for Vice Mayor Salazar, he is in Washington DC representing with CCG some members to help for cities' interests. Would you please rise and have the Pledge of Allegiance with me, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move on to item four, public comment. How many speaker cards, please?
I currently have thirteen speaker cards.
How many?
Thirteen.
Okay, that'll be two minutes, and please call the first speaker.
First speaker is Jamal Khatut, and if you could just give me one moment to adjust my clock.
And then as the first speaker's coming up, obviously, it'll be two minutes calling out the speaker card. I know we've gone over this, just to go over and please direct conversation to the council, no booing, jeering, etc. They'll call you up, as you know, and then if you could remain in the seated area, that would be appreciated. Please, Mr. Khatut, whenever you're ready. Two minutes, please.
Good evening, council. I'm calling on you to agendize a ceasefire resolution. On January 31st, the International Court of Justice said there's plausible evidence that Israel is committing genocide. Until their verdict is reached, they commanded that Israel take every precaution to preserve civilian lives and allow humanitarian aid in. Yet, Israel, as usual, doesn't comply with international law. They actually have their own military stand down while Israelis erect jumpy houses and stage protests blocking the aid. If those protesters were Palestinians, they would gun them down without hesitation. Here are just a few genocidal quotes from Israeli lawmakers. "We are now ruling out the Gaza NEKBA," said Parliament member Dikter. "Also, you must remember that Amalek has done what Amalek has done to you. Amalekites persecuted Israelites, and they all must be destroyed," said the Prime Minister Netanyahu. "Also, we are fighting human animals. No food, no water, no fuel will enter Gaza," said the Defense Minister. Those are just a few of the genocidal comments coming from the colonial state of Israel and their Knesset members. They are well documented with their genocidal rhetoric. One even called to drop a nuclear bomb on Gaza. You people need to wake up. You're on the wrong side of history, and your inaction is being documented. It boggles my mind how three of you cave to outside influence instead of listening to what your own community members are asking you to do. Since you obviously don't know, allow me to educate you. Zionism is a political movement, not a race or a religion. It's okay to criticize or disagree with them. It's not anti-Semitic, free Palestine.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Yesenia.
Can you call the next one up as well?
And the person to follow is Margie Power.
Thank you. When you're ready.
We have a council policy that says we don't get involved in international affairs. However, councilmembers are free to engage in outside issues as they wish in their own individual capacity. And sometimes, the community asks for support, and we need to give it to them. I think that we can all agree that the status quo will not lead to a long-lasting peace. As a council, it is our responsibility to ensure that everyone feels welcome here, and I would be in favor of agendizing a ceasefire resolution. Those were words spoken at the last council meeting in South City by the mayor, a courageous mayor, who followed the words of your constituents, speaking about what's happening to their families. The courage that he had to do that is something that you lack, and it's embarrassing that we have to keep doing this every single time. It's not hard to do the right thing when all it is is a symbolic vote. I encourage you to take the words of your neighbors and do the same thing, and ask for agendizing a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker?
Next speaker, Margie Power.
Can you call the next one up, please, as well?
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Margie Power with Leadership Council, San Mateo County. We are a countywide, cross-sector leadership development organization, and I'm here tonight to share a few opportunities for you all to get involved, or have your employees get involved. The first opportunity is we run two ten-month immersion programs, leadership immersion programs, one for senior-level leaders and one for emerging leaders or rising stars in your organization. And applications are open now, online. We empower leaders with civic knowledge, we enhance their leadership skills, and we help them build relationships around the county. And in addition to a hundred-plus hours of professional development and strengthening city relationships with county businesses and nonprofits, we have found that employees feel empowered with deeper leadership skills that inspire collaborative problem-solving, and they feel a heightened sense of purpose and local connection, increasing their job and life satisfaction. So I hope you'll consider encouraging some people to apply. The second opportunity is that we are hosting a workshop just for elected leaders. Hopefully, you all received an invitation in your email today. It's called "When Everyone Leads." It's in April, and we'd love to have you consider joining us. We have wonderful consultants coming out to run the two half-day workshop. And then finally, I'd love to invite San Bruno to consider becoming a city partner. That might mean providing meeting space for immersion programs and trainings, or being speakers at some of our days. We've had, actually, Assistant City Manager Smith speak in the past, and we'd love to figure out ways we can help you all out with your leadership professional development as well. So I have a packet here that I'll leave with the clerk. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Mariana, followed by Odei Kalay, followed by Neda.
I am Mariana Khatut, a first-generation Palestinian-American and a lifelong District Three resident who attended California Cappuccino High School. I am here again to ask you to agendize the ceasefire resolution. I understand that Mayor Rico Medina and Councilmember Sandy Alvarez are racist, so this probably won't happen, but I will be here every meeting to ask you anyways until our voices are heard. You both know that this city has raised the Ukrainian flag twice, a white country's flag raised next to the United States flag, but you can't even say that Palestinians should stop being killed. Do the two of you not understand what kind of message that sends to the people of color in San Bruno? Do you not care? Do you not care that thousands of children are dying? Wake up, people. San Bruno wants a ceasefire now.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Odei. I'm a Palestinian-American. I've been in San Bruno my whole life. There's a beautiful Palestinian community here. We've been here for decades. We own homes here, we rent here, we have local businesses, we support local businesses, and we've helped make San Bruno the city it is today. And so I'm asking for your support today in agendizing a ceasefire, calling for a ceasefire because we're hurting as a community. We've been hurting for five months now, and it's only gotten worse, and it gets worse every day. Thousands of kids are dying, people are dying every day, are being deliberately starved and killed and bombed, and it's not okay. And Palestinians are humans, they're human beings, they deserve rights, and they deserve freedom and liberation. So I'm calling on you to call for a ceasefire, and to stand on the right side of history and to have a heart in calling for a ceasefire, because you can be a part in the Palestinian freedom and liberation of Palestine. So please call for a ceasefire, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Okay, so I had something originally stated here on my phone, but I'm going to speak to you guys now about something different. I don't think this thing is on.
It is on.
Okay, so, first of all, we've been coming here since December 12th to ask you guys to agendize a ceasefire resolution, okay? Ms. Over here Alvarez told us this is temporary, right? It's been 158 days, okay? 14,000 children have been killed, and you're telling us, stay positive, this is temporary, this is going to end soon, when our family is literally being murdered? Our families are being murdered and starved? Kids have been killed for going to get flowers for their families to eat? And you guys are telling us to stay positive, and this will all end, and whatnot? Today's the second day of Ramadan. You guys probably don't know what Ramadan is, but it's when Muslims fast from sunrise to sunset. Second day of Ramadan. We're all here, okay, and we had asked if we can put food and water outside on the table. Then you had the San Bruno Police Department put tables outside. Racist, Islamophobic, we're not eating outside, we're not praying outside. You have disrespected your community over and over and over and over again. Disrespect, disrespect, disrespect. For what? We're going to eat inside, and we're going to pray inside because we're people. Like we said, you have disrespected us. You have disrespected our identity as Palestinians, as Muslims, and as constituents in the city. What's the issue if we go and eat on the table outside? This is the United States of America, we have the right to our religious freedoms. And this is exactly why, you guys have told us over and over again that you're racist. This is exactly why. These little barrier things, SFR, San Bruno Police Department, every time, like you're showing it to us, but we're still going to be here every time, and you're going to hear from us every single fucking time.
No clapping, please. No clapping. Hold on, folks. If we need to remove or not continue, what I'm asking is, first, the profanity. We do go out, and I think that that is not appropriate, and I would appreciate no profanity being used. Second, again, I've asked, and I didn't want to, I think I had to read the whole statement about, please, no booing, jeering, applauding, but I want to give the respect to the speaker and their views and comments. So next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Camila, followed by Russell Lee, followed by Nicole Hanhan.
Council, I have addressed you nearly every single meeting since December 12th, begging you, asking you to listen to your community. There are so many Palestinians that live in this city, and I have reminded you over and over and over again about our contributions to the economy of this city, its culture, its lifestyle. Everyone here in the city has a Palestinian friend, has grown up with a Palestinian, went to school with a Palestinian. We are a touchpoint of this city, but we are feeling ignored. We have done everything we could to educate you on the situation. Some of you said that you wanted to learn more, that you wanted to ask more questions. It's been five months. We were told that this was to be temporary and that we needed to be patient. How much longer do you want us to wait? How much longer do you want us to sit and be dehumanized? We have expressed to you all that policies happen from the ground up. Think locally and act globally. I just don't know how much more information you all need to understand that your community is grieving. The ceasefire movement is growing, and it will continue to grow. It will continue to grow in the peninsula, and we will continue to show up and to ask you for this resolution. We will not give up. Palestinians are a resilient people, and Palestinians don't give up. The people in Gaza need us. They need us to tap into our humanity and to speak for them. There are children being crushed underneath the rubble, children, tiny little babies. Babies are dying of dehydration and starvation. There is no water, there is no formula. Women can't even produce breast milk. This is systematic erasure of our people. Our tax dollars are directly funding this. I could keep going on and on and on about why this is wrong, yet you continue to be silent.
Thank you for your comments. Next speakers, please.
Hi, my name is Russell, and I'm a student at Skyline College, and I'm living in South San Francisco. I'm here to support and amplify the cause of your San Bruno constituents, for you to agendize and pass a ceasefire resolution for Gaza, as they have been coming to you for the past three months. With every month, thousands more have been killed while you deflect your moral responsibility. You mistake your lack of courage for a political value. It is not a right to stance to claim neutrality. It is one model of cowardice on the campaign trail, leading right to those seats right there. When kids have to ration animal feed in northern Gaza, you say it's not your place to weigh in, even when cities across this country have passed the same resolution. When 14,000 children have been murdered with our federal government's support, you refuse to say the word ceasefire. When 153 countries in this world have called for a ceasefire multiple times while the US ignores it, you have the audacity to say this council, based in the United States, is detached from the conversation? Why do you want your legacy as a council member to be remembered as a genocide denier? As someone who did not use their power and privileged position during this time to the benefit of anyone but the people advocating for Gaza's destruction? Shame, shame, shame. Rico Medina, Sandy Alvarez, and Michael Salazar do the bare minimum. Can't even let people break their fast in the lobby. Mayor Rico Medina, Islamophobic, insecure, and petty, racist. Shame, 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 shame. Shame.
Next speakers, please.
My name is Nicole. Can you hear me? I'm a lifelong resident of District Two. I'm also a business owner in San Bruno as well. Once more, I stand before you tonight urging for you all, our city leaders, to take action around the current genocide occurring as we speak, impacting our constituents on a day-to-day basis. The persistent lack of acknowledgement only serves to underscore oppressive tendencies and disregard for our community. We are in a revolutionary time where silence is not an option. Over 30,000 dead with no accountability for their killers. Where is your humanity when you stay silent in the seat you occupy? I hear a vast rise in psychosomatic issues impacting our residents here. Trauma, the city with a heart bears so much trauma. Your silence only intensifies that trauma one-hundredfold. We are all connected by our humanity. Your separation from your own humanity is only a reflection of you and the forces in which succumb, you succumb to so willingly. You're either on the right side of history, standing for justice, or on the wrong side, facing the repercussions of your participation in the mass orders occurring as we speak. As time slips away, so does our patience. With each moment that passes, our resolve strengthens, fueled by the injustices we witness. We will not give up on humanity, we will not give up on speaking out against the atrocities occurring, we will not give up on speaking up for the anguish our brave residents are facing.
Thank you for your comments. Next speakers, please.
Next speaker is Kellyana H., followed by Aleni Khatut, followed by Kinta Dewa.
Hello, my name is Kellyana Hugh, and I went to elementary school in San Bruno, and I'm here to ask you all to agendize a bilateral ceasefire resolution. We all need an end to this humanitarian crisis, and a permanent bilateral ceasefire resolution will ensure sanctity for all people. We are here because our elected officials in Washington and the state of California have failed us. People are starving, and you here are our elected officials, and we're asking you to do something. A call for a permanent bilateral ceasefire in our city can create a domino effect for our state and federal governments to follow. Change begins at the local level, and as leaders in our community, please show humanity. Yeah, we're asking you to, sorry, can't see, bring a stop to this restriction and bring in humanitarian aid to those in Gaza by calling for a bilateral ceasefire. Also, as a Filipina, I think it's embarrassing to not understand what colonization is, given the history of the Philippines, and remain silent on this issue. The colonization of the Philippines is parallel to what's happening to the Palestinians, and I urge you to take some ethnic study classes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay. Good evening and welcome back, Councilmember Sandy Alvarez. Your absence was hardly noticed, and I can't wait to see what little value you have to contribute to this meeting. The January 9th meeting, this council listened to 110 community members in favor of agendizing a ceasefire resolution. As Sandy voted against this, she said, "I can only hope that amidst this crisis, this community be united and not be divided." Of all the things you said that night, this was the only comment that conveyed a sliver of intelligence. San Bruno has arguably the largest Palestinian community on the peninsula. Ever since we first came to you on December 15th, this community has shown up more united than ever. Of the eight people who spoke out against the resolution, only two of them were San Bruno residents. They all go to every council meeting in the Bay Area and try to paint themselves as the victims and insist that the killing must continue to protect Israelis. Where are they today, and where have they been? They are not your San Bruno community that you swore to represent. Another stupid comment you made that night was that this resolution may result in long-term disagreement between two groups within our community. I can assure you that no such resolution is creating the long-term disagreement. It's colonization and ethnic cleansing of our people while the Israelis hide behind their tanks, the money given to them by the West and Judaism. Nothing that the Israeli government does is representative of Jewish values. Their murderous tendencies, the lies and propaganda that dehumanizes us and perpetuates Islamophobia is what creates long-term disagreement, and simpletons like you are believing it. It's time that you pull your heads out of your asses and the asses of the JCRC, put those brain cells together, and start to represent your community. We are not going away until our voices are heard, and tonight, Rico, your actions showed us we're going to be here for a long time. Be ready to be out of office. That was despicable out there.
Next speakers, please.
I'd like to share an update of something that the council in Palestine City of Jericho has done. They have named a street after Aaron Bushnell, the US airman who set himself on fire outside the Israeli embassy, calling for a free Palestine. On Sunday, they unveiled the street name, and the mayor stated, "We did not know him, and he did not know us. There was no social, economic, or political ties between us. What we share is a love for freedom and a desire to stand against these attacks on Gaza." That was the mayor of Jericho in Palestine. While here, the mayor of San Bruno, who has multiple ties to the Palestinian community, with his knowledge or without, has denied agendizing a ceasefire resolution, has denied the concept of dialogue within your council and this community. It is shameful that you choose to put your pockets and your title ahead of your community. And I promise you, after the actions that took place today, you will see this room filled once again.
Next speaker is Matt Jones, followed by Louis, followed by Juliana G.
I just wanted to comment on a disturbing trend that I've noticed in the city here, which is basically that we have two paths forward, you know? And I've worked on staff as a consultant, working with four different jurisdictions in the Bay Area. I've seen good practices and I've seen not-so-good practices. I feel like there are two paths. We have democracy, we have authoritarianism. And in this community, what's been very unfortunate for me as a person who lived here and also who's worked here for a couple of years is, we've been going towards authoritarianism. That's been the default, that's where we're going in the actions I saw tonight, which was trying to stop people from praying inside, to have a private space to do so and exercise First Amendment, speech, and religion simultaneously, because these people are fasting, they have to do both of those at the same time. And we were told at the very last minute after I reached out six times to the city, nothing until the very end, and then here, we're going to set up something outside for you, where it's cold, where you're surrounded by police. That is not democracy. When I look at this, no public access beyond this point, yeah, that's not democracy. So we have a choice, and to me, you know, with this election that took place last week too, I saw nothing on social media. I saw nothing on the website indicating to people what polling places were open. So to me, again, that's not democracy. So I think we have a very clear choice, you know, and to promote democracy, we need to promote cultural understanding among staff, especially among police, council, the mayor. We must go that direction. Thank you.
I just really want to say that I was really disturbed about what happened out there. I can't believe that you guys can't allow these people to just sit inside and eat their pizza, pray, their fasting. I've seen countless people at countless meetings go outside, have a snack, come back in and have no problems. Not a single word has been said to them. And it's just really upsetting that they want to go and pray, and you expect them to go outside in the cold, surrounded by police, in the dark. Like, it's just really depressing to see, and it really hurts my soul. And it's just crazy to see that from that first meeting where we all came, over 110 people, as they mentioned, to ask you to agendize a ceasefire, the people that were against it, not a single one of them have shown up since that day. They say they're from this community, yet they don't show it. We've been here every single time. Every two weeks, we're here, no matter what. We're here showing you that we're a part of this community, we're participating, we're talking on different topics, yet you just choose to ignore us. And it makes me really sad, and I hope that this election goes the way that we needed to go, because some of you guys have to get out of here. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm not too sure what I need to say, because a lot of the things I feel other people are saying are not getting through to you, and all I can really say is, I don't understand why this needs to be here, or why we needed to have this conversation with the to have this conversation with the officer outside about letting people be able to eat and pray out in this space here when we know that we've been able to do that before, and then putting a tent outside out there. And it really shows how much fear is existing in these few people sitting right in front of us. I don't understand what is fearful of us when we come here and we are respectful every single time that we are in this space with you. And it's upsetting that we still have to continue to ask you to agendize this ceasefire resolution and continue to bring up points, and I feel like I'm just losing my voice if I keep saying that. It's been over 38,000 people that have died, over 71,000 people wounded in Gaza, and it continues to happen, as people are starving and dying and being brutally killed. And this is happening to... What I ask is that us continuing to come here, that you understand that you need to listen to us, to hear us out. And it feels like if you're not going to be representative of us and hearing us out, then you do not deserve to be in those spaces that you are in. We are the ones that put you in those spaces, and we put you there because we believe that you uphold us for our community, and right now, you are showing that you are not with us.
I have no other speaker cards. Wassam Dawa.
Thank you. Good evening, council. My name is Wassam Dawa. I'm a resident in District 3. I had come here with a prepared talk, but after I came in and realized and heard what happened, I'm only going to read a little of what I read, or wrote, sorry, excuse me. I urge the city council to agendize a ceasefire resolution. The entire world is watching a live genocide for 158 days straight. Your constituents' family members have been killed by the dozens, and this is a resolution to preserve humanity. Let me remind you that humanity has no boundaries, and yes, this should be a priority for San Bruno if it chooses to preserve humanity. We know you've gotten calls and emails from Zionist organizations that have warned you that this resolution is divisive, but how can a ceasefire be... Before we can achieve, in a time of indiscriminate violence, we must end violence with a ceasefire. And if you're so concerned about being called Semitic, let me just remind you that you have actually just been proven that you are Islamophobic by your actions tonight. This is despicable. This is insane. 2004. You're telling us to pray outside. What kind of city with heart is this? We sat here, time, listening to you guys talk about beautifying San Bruno. What kind of heart is this? The city of council is lacking heart, and we need leaders who have heart in the spine. Ceasefire now.
Last speaker is... Last speaker is Sasan David.
Hello. I didn't have anything prepared today, but I was just so appalled by the events that are just happening around us, and I want to echo what the rest of the community is saying. I'm a resident of District 1. We've been coming here week after week, we're showing up at City Hall weekly, we've had a vigil, we are engaged in the community. And I'm struggling to find the words that would resonate with you, that would move you to action. I don't understand why this is such a difficult decision for you. I don't feel that this idea that this is out of scope is truly genuine or sincere. It's not consistent with previous resolutions that have been held by this body. And I question your leadership, why you're in positions of power, and why you're unwilling to listen to your constituents and represent them. It's... I'm not going to give you facts about what's happening or give you an update, because if you truly genuinely care about what's happening to this community, you would be looking for that information yourself. And so I'm just here to ask you to agendize a resolution once again, like the rest of the community. Like, this is, you know, unacceptable, that we have to continue to come, to continue to be disrespected, to be disregarded. And some form of recognition or acknowledgement would be, you know, helpful to at least understand your positions at this point, because there's been meetings where we are completely ignored, and there is no kind of comment. I believe it was the last session that a lot of members spoke out specifically to Councilman Salazar, and I understand it was a very long meeting, but, you know, it would be good to have some acknowledgement. Thank you.
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay, with that, we will move on. The agenda to announcements and presentations, there is one announcement, and that is that the annual spring egg hunt and pancake breakfast is scheduled for March 23rd, 2024, beginning at 9:00 a.m. Visit sanbruno.ca.gov/ActivityGuide for more information on this event and other recreational programs. With that, we'll move on to Item 6, which is Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in a earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be a single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member has requested to pull an item for a separate vote. Colleagues, any separate vote items? Any questions or comments? No, okay. Public comments on consent, please.
I have two speaker cards. Eleni Katut, followed by Matt Jones.
So I understand that the January 9th meeting is... Those minutes are going to be approved, and I couldn't help but notice the pages and pages of members of San Bruno who spoke out in favor of the ceasefire resolution, and only eight people spoke out against it, two of whom were San Bruno residents. And everything just said, like, oh, so-and-so supports or so-and-so opposes, and I don't know who takes record or anything, but I feel like we could be a little more thorough than that if things are getting into the public record. We could even include Sandy's wonderful comments about telling us to be patient and just accept the death of our children and to stay positive. And, yeah, I think that should be included. It would be a more thorough account of the meeting. And while we're on that topic, I think on the other topic of being acknowledged as a community, Sandy, if maybe at the end of the meeting, you can tell us what being patient looks like.
Okay, that's not part of consent. That's not part of consent. I'm sorry. It is on consent.
How to stay positive. Thank you.
Okay, it is for items that are on the consent calendar that are listed...
That was on the consent calendar.
It was not on the consent calendar. I'm not... It was not on the consent calendar. You had a comment on minutes, which is perfectly perfect, but the second item was not. Next speaker, please.
Hi again, everyone. My comment is on 6D Consent Calendar Item, Housing Element Annual Progress Report. As some of you might know, I am an urban planner. I do work on housing and transportation, and I did that work for two years for the city of San Bruno. During my time here, the city was in the middle of a housing cycle, and those run in eight years. I'm just explaining this for the public, but I think that the public deserves to know how housing works, what the state's responsibilities are versus what local jurisdictions are. And I know this is normally a consent calendar item for most jurisdictions, but I think that the community deserves to really know what's happening with development in this community, or actually really what's not happening with development in this community. I think that there's a large faction of the community that unfortunately doesn't want to see housing produced in the city, and the results of the last eight years have clearly shown that. San Bruno had the lowest percentage of its requirements that the state mandates per city out of any community in San Mateo County. It built just 28% of the required housing. It was only 332 out of 1,115 units. It was by far the worst in the county. It was actually tied for total permits with Atherton, which exceeded their required amounts because they're such a small community. It's lower than that of Milbrae, of Burlingame, of San Carlos, who are all communities that are smaller in both area and population, but they're producing more housing than San Bruno is. The numbers are just really, really bad for the community, and I think we need to do a deep dive and understand why the city's not building housing, what can be done to encourage housing. The two biggest applications that came in under this last cycle, for this last year, are coming in because of state mandated requirements. So the city has not done a very good job of adopting locally-produced projects that are going through a city process where we have a chance to actually have the community weigh in, in a productive way, and get some more wins for the community. We're losing those things with concessions and waivers through state density bonus. There's all these tools that we are losing because we aren't doing a good enough job of attracting developers. We need to get to the bottom of that. We need to talk about it. I want to see more... I want to see this whole program section of the spreadsheet that's in the packet has all these different programs that the city could be doing that you guys aren't doing. And it's almost like whoever filled this out is just like checking a box, and this is not to say anything against staff. I think it's also leadership, where I encourage you guys to take a look through that sheet and really say, what can we do here? Beyond just attracting development, how can we help seniors? How can we help the homeless? How can we make this community more affordable like it once was when I grew up here? But people are falling further and further behind because of the high cost of living. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards.
Then we brought back to council for any action for consent.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on consent.
Motion to approve consent, is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Hamilton II Medina, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes for a unanimous.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe, and I'm going to make sure it's okay, so there was a question during public comment of, or a comment about that our minutes are more of action minutes, and I think it's fair to inform our community that that's the way that we're putting our minutes down. It takes a lot of time to go ahead and capture everything that's being said, and then you also risk getting it wrong, right? So our minutes are based on action minutes, so it's really streamlined, and it makes it... All the meetings are available on YouTube to watch, so I just wanted to kind of explain why it's just one line, spoke in favor, spoke against. So, it's okay?
And they normally practice this, and correct me, is they don't put the city, because it's not a requirement to even say what city or town you live in, so that usually isn't identified. Years ago, folks used to have to give their address, which was kind of intuitive, because if you're here, that means you're not home. And so that had, not just because of that, it's just the practice throughout all agencies about not having to give or being requested to give one's address. Okay, with that, let's move on to public hearings.
Item 7A, consider introducing reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno Amending Title 12 Land Use, Article II Subdivisions, and Article III Zoning to Improve Planning Permit Processes and Other Minor Amendments," and finding such actions exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act and adoption of a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 1995-29 and Resolution Number 2022-20.
Thank you, Director of Community Development. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Peter Gilli. I'm the director of community development, and this item is municipal code amendments to improve the planning permitting process. Okay, the agenda for this item, I will go through the objective, the background, an overview of the amendments, what the schedule and next steps are, and with a recommendation. The objective is to have council introduce an ordinance that is being recommended that will improve the planning permitting processes and other minor amendments. Starting off with background, I think the first question is what is the planning permit process? It's been hinted at already in the public comment on the consent calendar, but the planning process is basically the... What a property owner has to go through to get the city approvals that are required by either our subdivision or our zoning codes. In theory, the process is a positive thing, because it's the review of a proposal to make sure it complies with projects. But over the years, throughout the state, each city will add more to the process. They'll find a new thing that they want to add, and that process gets a little longer, a little more complicated. There's rarely a time to go back and look at the process and say, hey, are there things that we are looking a lot at that maybe we don't need to? The net result of that is that the state calls the typical planning process a governmental constraint to housing. So again, echoing one of the public speakers. Those in the economic development world also, many of them view planning processes as a potential constraint to economic development. And the goal of what is being proposed here is to have a planning process that is proportionate to the effect, either the actual effect or the perceived or potential effect of the application type. And so, I already started the purpose. In 2023, council adopted a strategic initiative that called for improvements to both the planning process and the building permit processes. And what is being recommended is a streamlined process that particularly will help minor application types, which will be what staff believes is a great benefit to homeowners and small businesses. In addition, it will recognize that there are limited resources for staffing and the planning commission for many major initiatives that have a community-wide effect. Some of them are on the screen. And making these amendments will actually free up some capacity to work on these topics. And tonight is the fifth meeting about this topic in some form. As in, on May 9th, as mentioned, council adopted the strategic initiative. In December, a joint planning commission and council study session was held, and the topics were what the principles of the process should be and concepts of how the codes could be changed. There was very positive feedback from both the council and the commission. Then in early February, planning commission had their first... Had a study session to talk about their first look at the actual text of the proposed amendments, and very positive feedback was received from the planning commission. And then on February 20th, the planning commission had a public hearing where they voted unanimously to recommend that the council adopt the set of amendments that are here tonight. So going to give a brief overview of the amendments, how we got there. First off, there was a review of all the application types and processes, and what was weighed was the significance of the application type to the immediate area, to a neighborhood, or to the overall community. or to the overall community. We also looked at the attendance and participation at the hearings for these type of applications. That allowed us to come up with categories and thresholds. So certain application types were classified as major, and the principle is if it's a major project, it should go to a planning commission hearing. Certain applications were identified as minor, and those were thought to go through an administrative process. And then there were some that fell into what I'm going to call a, what I'm going to call a very minor application, and those are ones where it may not need a planning permit at all. And we'll touch on those. Start with the R1 and R2 processes. These are for single-family homes and duplexes. This slide was based on something shown in December. The top two boxes represent applications that fully comply with all the regulations. The bottom two are ones that do not comply with regulations and ask for some level of variation from the rules. Then the boxes on the left are relatively minor in scale, whereas the boxes on the right are larger. In theory, the boxes, the applications in the green box, ones that fully comply and have no privacy concerns based on our current standards, in theory shouldn't need a permit. But interestingly enough, our current regulations would cause some applications in the green box to go through as many hearings as an application that is asking for major variation. And so what was looked at was, how do we make it so it is more reasonable to what's being asked for? And so if, under the recommended ordinance, if your application falls in the green box, you don't need a planning permit. You fully comply with everything. You don't trigger any privacy concerns. Just move forward and work on your building permit. For the dark red, these are the ones asking for the most variation. You definitely should have a hearing, and it should be the planning commission. The two in the middle, the tan and the lighter shade of red, or maybe that's pink, should be more of, it should still have a planning review, but have it be an administrative action, and instead of a full 300-foot mailing radius, just the adjacent neighbors, because these are more minor, mostly affect the immediate neighbors. The planning commission was very supportive of this breakdown, and the key question at the commission was, well, where's the line between modest variation and a major variation? And so the threshold on the left of the slide are what would determine whether it goes to the planning commission or stays as an administrative action. If it varies from our ordinance regulations, setback exception by more than two feet, going over an FAR of .62, you go over any of those thresholds, you're major, and you're at planning commission. The privacy items, again, these are all existing standards. If you don't have any, if you don't have a third story, or you don't have certain kinds of second-story windows or decks, then you're going to fall into the green category and not the tan one. And if you don't have those, no planning permit. If you do, it's administrative action. So planning commission was supportive of these changes, and the ordinances you have do reflect that. The next major category of review is development review outside of the R1 and R2 zone, so it's basically everywhere else in the city. And in this diagram, there's interior projects, exterior projects, minor and major. Well, development review or design review, we don't look at interior projects. So those are not going to need a permit, and they currently don't now. Thresholds were developed for what's a minor exterior, minor change to an exterior or a major exterior change. Major would go to planning commission, have the 300-foot noticing. Minor would be administrative with adjacent noticing. And the thresholds are up on the screen. They're additions of under 10%, to a building, or cumulatively and cumulatively under 10,000 square feet. Any new buildings will be major. So in the multifamily zones, in the commercial zones, industrial zones, any new building is going to be planning commission. One thing that was, it's discussed at the commission was, an exception, if it's an accessory structure on a commercial lot that's not in the public view, those don't have to go to planning commission. But pretty much any other new building will. So again, two different processes, depending on where certain thresholds are. The planning commission was very supportive of this as well. The last major category of change is in use permits. Currently, pretty much every use permit goes to the planning commission. There are four categories in staff's mind about uses. Some are permitted. You don't need a use permit. You're just allowed. Some are prohibited. There's no process for you. You're just not allowed unless you change the zoning. That then leaves, if you're a conditional use. The vast majority of these no longer have people, either business owners or neighbors attending these meetings. So the planning commission recommendation is, all conditional uses will be minor, except for a key list of uses that are major and will always be planning commission. And the list of major are the adult businesses, bars, lounges, nightclubs, our card rooms, drive-through facilities. And of course, we have a special regulation for commercial cannabis operators that they have to go to planning commission and to council. So those would always be planning commission, but all the other conditional uses would be an administrative hearing, because state law requires use permits have a hearing, and all of these are a 300-foot notice. So as I've said through this, the planning commission has had, did have strong support for all these ordinance amendments. There were two types of comments that were frequently raised in our discussions. One was ways to better inform the public about projects, and then what method, is there a method to still have preliminary review by the planning commission of larger projects? Staff believes both of these are important and is working towards them. For the topic of public notification, in response to the planning commission's inquiries at the February 20th hearing, we outlined a proposed modernization of our process on notification. Instead of focusing on mail notices just to larger and larger mailing radiuses, as was adopted in a past council resolution, staff and the PC want to work on an online tool that has a list of all the planning applications on a map with a certain amount of information to inform member of the public who's interested, links to the planner in order to get more information, links to a signup sheet to get email notifications of that. The benefit to this is, if you go to that site, you see everything. You don't just see the one project that's near you that is going to go to a hearing in the next, you know, two weeks. So we think that has a lot more usefulness than sending out more of the mail notices. The planning commission was strongly supportive of that, and if council is also agreeable to that, the ordinance is set up for the noticing, as was discussed, with the 300-foot noticing for certain things and the adjacent for the administrative actions that don't have hearings. We do recommend, if council supports that, that we do rescind the 2022 council resolution, because now the ordinance and that resolution are not in alignment. And again, if council is agreeable, we will work to launch the initial version of this tool on the website by July 1, which is the effective date that we are shooting for of this ordinance. We're also going to hold a study session with the planning commission in the summer or fall to show the initial version of it, get their feedback, ideas of how to improve that, and then bring that to the council as an informational item or as a digest item, but share the same information with the council. The other topic that the commissioners were very interested in was having preliminary review for larger projects. And from staff's perspective, having an optional early opportunity to have a developer bring a large project to the commission is very positive. A developer has to go through a lot of work to get their plans to a final state. And if the applicant's able to get some feedback from the planning commission early in the process, before all those plans are finalized, they can have much more influence on it. And then the applicant's also pleased because they know that the decision maker is already, that they've already had a chance to take a shot at addressing the issues that the decision maker has. So because of state laws and such, we do recommend that this be an optional process. And the planning commission's intent, and staff concur, is to model the early meeting more like a workshop and less like a hearing, which is how the architectural review committee has operated. Again, we think that could be very beneficial, not necessarily expecting it will be used that often, because it will really be for the larger projects in which maybe there's only one or two going on at any one time. So along these lines, we want to, if the commission, if the council is interested in this, we want to have a study session with the commission in the latter half of 2024 to develop the concept more. So back to the amendments themselves, closing this out. These are other items that were discussed at the planning commission. One is to eliminate the ARC. Now, the ARC is made up of the planning commission. It's a subcommittee of the planning commission. It rotates. Planning commission's in full support, because these amendments take the major projects and have it go to the full planning commission, and the minor projects go to an administrative process. And so the planning commission is in support of eliminating the ARC. The reconsideration process, this is a new process where the city can call up an existing application, modify or add conditions to a permit. This is particularly important for use permits that might have been approved very long ago and don't have detailed operational conditions, but they're causing an issue in the present day. This allows us, if necessary, to call the item back. Right now, the ordinance has the opportunity to call the item, to revoke the permit, which means to basically, well, cause the permit to not have any effect. Reconsideration isn't a revocation. They still will have the permit. It's just that, if necessary, a conditional of approval can be added or changed. We think that could be a good tool for the city. There's sections on allowances for certain cases of longer temporary use permits, particularly for construction yards, for projects that are happening in the city, other type of temporary facilities. There was discussion about public convenience and necessity. This is a special finding requested by the state for certain alcohol permits. In 1995, the council adopted a resolution that delegated all the authority to the director of community development. Certain alcohol uses will require a use permit, and the ordinance would call for, if that, the ordinance would say that public convenience and necessity should go with the use permit to the planning commission. So effectively, not all of them would be by the director. And so we would recommend adopting the ordinance and then rescinding the 1995 resolution, just so there is clarity in what the process is. Then there were outdoor dining regulations added. This allows a commercial property, a commercial tenant, I should say, to take up to two parking spaces on site, as long as there's safety precautions. Of course, the owner of the property has to also be on board with it. This was a separate council initiative of a prior year and was wrapped into this package. And then lastly, there are two sections about call-ups, and this is basically where the planning commission or council could call up an application to come to their level that wouldn't normally come up to that level. This is recommended to be, recommended to be deleted, with the rationale being that since council adopts all the rules, and the major projects are going to planning commission, who the council appoints, there, and there's an appeal process where, of all these permits, and the council has been very clear, appropriately so, in our opinion, of setting the appeal fee and not cost recovery. It's a small fraction of cost recovery. We believe the appeal process exists and works, and that the call-up provisions are not necessary. Moving towards the conclusion, I just want to state for the record that staff recommends that this set of amendments is exempt from environmental, additional environmental review because they're process-related and they do not increase the intensity of future development. Any planning application that goes through a discretionary process itself will have environmental review. And then one item that was said would be in this package in December that is not in this package is the multifamily ministerial process. And the draft is developed, planning commission has seen it, but it makes a reference to our sixth-cycle housing element that we're still working with HCD on finalizing, and it literally refers to certain sections of the document, and in the off-chance that because of our work with HCD, we have to move some stuff around or change the labeling, we don't want to bring forward this ordinance yet. We are, or I am cautiously optimistic that we're going to be bringing the readoption of a certified housing element to the council by the end of the fiscal year. We would bring that ordinance at the same time. Then the schedule and next steps, the action. This is a slide also from December, showing how the action on this ordinance, which is the planning process improvements, the timing is critical, because what is decided here will inform what changes happen to the fee schedule. The fee schedule comes to council end of April. If all of those fall in line, the effective date of the new regulations and that fee schedule would be on July 1. So the recommendation, first, a quick summary. This amendment package, it fulfills part of a council initiative. Admittedly, it doesn't make the regulations perfect, but it makes the processes more proportionate to what's being asked for. So we think it's a good step forward. It's going to offer major improvements for homeowners and small businesses that go through the planning processes, adds capacity so that other long-range initiatives can be worked on, many of which are council priorities as well. Very happy to say, at every stage, the planning commission was in unanimous support of these concepts. And then, as I noted, the, we will be having a online information tool about the projects and working with the planning commission on a preliminary review process. So with that, as read by the clerk, this is our recommendation, and available for any questions.
Thank you very much for the report. This time, is there any questions on the presentation from colleagues?
I have one, but I go first all the time.
Councilmember Medina.
If you want to go first, you can.
No, he's.
Hamilton comes before Medina in the alphabet, but, okay. So yes, thank you very much for the report. I remember this being brought forward, and it's great to see how we could streamline things and make things easier. My question is, you mentioned an example of perhaps having an accessory building, and it wouldn't have to come back if it was under a certain size, but would that also be true? be true if there were changes in parking? Like if they put that accessory building and took away parking, would that, how would that work?
So there's, there's a lot of layers to that. So if it, if the project is in an area close to our transit corridors, then state law really preempts us from requiring any parking. Let's say it's an area outside of, of, of that. There is a section, an existing section of the ordinance that has a parking compliance permit, which is currently, it, it, it's an administrative action. And so if somebody came in to do this accessory structure on, on, on a commercial lot, or does anything that changed the parking lot, they would not necessarily be going to a planning commission hearing. It would probably be.
Administrative?
Administrative.
Okay. So what you said also was interesting that if it's in the trans or, if it's near transit within a half mile, which is pretty much almost all of San Bruno from what I remember.
Well, it, it's certainly all of the major corridors.
Definitely all the major corridors, but I remember, well, you know what? Samtrans did cut, cut some of their routes, so maybe it's different. But my point is that they could do, there's no longer a requirement to have the parking? Is that, is I, did I hear you correctly? In, in areas of transit?
There, there's, there's no longer the authority for us to require a minimum amount of parking in those areas.
So if a new grocery store wanted to open up on El Camino, they would not have to provide parking?
We wouldn't be able to require it. Certain, certain projects have been coming forward and are still providing some parking.
Right.
Not as much as, 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 as what the city rules would require, but in theory, a grocery store could, could propose, you know, to be built and have no parking.
Right. And it's just a matter of, would you go to a grocery store that didn't have any parking that you were circling around the neighborhood? So it's, it's a business owner decision, but they do have the right. So that's, I didn't know that. And so that's very interesting and, and thank you for that. So that's that question. I have a concern about our temporary construction yards. There are two of them that have been in existence for a number of years. And they really, I had concerns about this when this was allowed to be done administratively and didn't come to the council. And based on what I have seen, it needs to come back to council. People that operate these construction yards, they don't really care about what it looks like. And I think that in here, one, to just allow an extension is, is, I'm not going to support that. I think that it should come, it should come back to the council. So I'll leave it at, I'll leave it there. We have a construction lay-down yard along Huntington that's by Caltrans, Caltrain and Bart, or Caltrain. How long is that going to be there?
So, so the interesting thing is that in the last two, three years, a council item was passed that took away the temporary use permit requirement for a construction yard.
Yes.
So they no longer require a temporary use permit.
Understood.
This would require them to have a temporary use permit again. The rationale at the time for taking out the requirement was that, because the only way to have a temporary use permit for more than three months was to go to planning commission, the amount of time it would take to go through that process would be so long, it would slow down, slow down the project. So from, from staff's perspective, putting the temporary use permit back in gives us something to enforce, gives us something to revoke if necessary. Right now, there's no permit to enforce. So.
Understood.
It, it can be changed to come to, to, to a higher hearing. There will just be the concern about, about the time and cost.
I, I feel the timing cost isn't worth the neighborhoods that are affected by the blight of a lay-down yard. So I don't know how, I'm in support of everything else other than basically that. So I have another question, and maybe we'll get to that in a minute, about how I'm going to be able to vote for support of the majority of this, these things. And maybe I would put a motion with amending to remove that piece out so that it does move forward. The question I have about outdoor dining, that now that we have parking meters, how are we going to resolve that loss of revenue? Because the whole design of our parking enforcement program was to get the revenue from the parking meters. And so no one's yet done it here in San Bruno. I don't think it's really going to likely happen anytime soon because our weather isn't that conducive to enjoying a windy day in our downtown, which it normally gets. So has any consideration been done for the fees of the outdoor dining, outdoor dining process now that we have parking meters?
Yeah, so the, there's, there's two flavors of outdoor dining. One are the parklets that do go in the street where we, we do have the regulations. The, the regulations in the zoning ordinance are about the ones on private property.
Okay.
So it, it, none of the regulations, if, if the outdoor dining is adopted in this package, it won't affect anything on the street.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that clarification. And my, my last suggestion in the modernized public notification is also kudos to our city clerk in, in posting our agendas online on social media. So I really think that's helpful. And so if staff could also utilize the social media component of letting the community know about these projects, that you were thinking about having the website, but also having a way of sharing those projects so people are aware of. And, and that's, that's a big thing for people that live in San Bruno to say, oh, I didn't know they were doing that, you know? So it's just a way to keep people more informed. So those are my questions and comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think overall the resolution or the ordinance, proposed ordinance is good in terms of the, the e-notices within the required radius. I know we evolved from sending five pages of notices, mailing them stamped, down to postcard, little postcard, and I thought that was more convenient. Now we are, you know, evolving to e-notices, which I completely support. The only concern I have is within those required radius, how do we reach the neighbors? I mean, how do they even know that we're sending e-notices without receiving? Because most of the time, they rely on what comes in to their mailbox. And if we're changing it to e-notices, what are the steps in the process to trans, you know, transforming to the e-notices? How do they get notified?
So two parts to that. The first is that anything that still requires a hearing will still get the 300-foot postcard in the mail. If it's an administrative item, it would be a postcard just to the adjacent. If it's a hearing, it's 300 feet. The e-notices are like on top of that. The, the strategies we've started to talk about are if, if we create that, that list that has everything on it, then instead of advertising a particular project in either the, in a, a, an insert to a bill or in, in the city manager's newsletter, we would advertise the list of all the projects. Social media could be a reminder, hey, you know, if you want to see what's going on in town, go look at this listed map. So we're talking about all those things. Admittedly, they're not worked out yet. It, it's something we'd be doing between now and, and July 1. But, but everyone would still get 300 feet notice for everything that goes to a hearing and at least adjacent for all the administrative.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So I have a question about the, the preliminary review of larger projects section, and I apologize for not asking this question during the, during the joint session or in my written comments. This is always something that has struck me tonight as we've been going through this. I just want to make sure, as we all know, there's, there are new state laws that were put into place, especially for larger projects, that there can only be a certain number of, of meetings that a project has to go through. And I just want to make sure that, that these, that this meeting doesn't count. So like I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want a, a scenario where a developer could ask for one of these optional meetings and then have that count against their, their, their total to prevent a much more important meeting that may happen later. Is that, is, I just want to make sure that that scenario can't take place.
I, I think there's two, two options for that. And I'll ask for the attorney to chime in if I, if I get this wrong. But the first is, I honestly don't think a housing developer is going to go for this process because state law says we can only talk about objective standards. The types of things that come up in these type of preliminary reviews, they're not necessarily objective standards. They're how something is laid out, how something looks. Our hands are pretty much tied on that. The, on, on the other part is I believe that if a housing, housing developer did ask to be able to go to that meeting, we could request that they exempt it from counting?
I have to listen.
Okay. So we can look into that, but, but if, if by, if the ordinance amendment is passed, then what used to be really at least two hearings, an ARC and a planning commission, that might be just one now.
Right.
Or maybe two planning commission meetings. An appeal to council, now we're at three, you could pretty much have a, a preliminary meeting in there and will still have an extra meeting.
Got it.
But we'll, we'll look into all the details and if we have to make a, a policy that prevents us being hurt by, by doing it, we'll certainly do so.
Thank you. That, that's all I ask is that we just look, look into that just to make sure that we're covered in that, in that regard. And then another question, this is regarding Councilmember Medina's concern regarding the temporary use permit requirement for construction yards. So given that there's no current, there's no permit required currently because of actions we took a couple of years ago, which isn't working out very well, and that this, and that this will bring back something that we can enforce, I'm okay with having the community development director be the approver. And, but I want to, but I do want to ask the question, if there are cases of blight or whatever, something that, that the community is bringing to us as council members to, to be addressed, I'm assuming that we as council members would be able, have the ability to bring these to staff attention through the city manager. And then if an issue persists at an extreme level, we could even agendize an item to take action on a specific use permit at council level if we, if we so desired. Is that, is that true?
I don't know if the, if the, if the path is exactly as, as, as you laid out, but the, the end result is. If there is a permit, then there is more to enforce. There's something that can be revoked and so on and so forth. Whether that would necessarily come up to council, as the ordinance has written, such a revocation hearing could occur at a lower level. Those could be appealed. And I would think anything that is revoked would probably get appealed. And so it could end up coming to council unless you're suggesting that you specifically want certain things to come to council. My advice would be, since it allows for the revocation, allows for appeal processes, if the issue gets addressed, it maybe, maybe doesn't need to all come to council.
Right. Okay. So I guess, and maybe, maybe this should fall under the, the post-public comment part where we, where it's, where it's, where it's comments or stuff. But I'm just trying to figure out a way to address Councilmember Medina's concerns because it does, it does seem that what we're, what we're considering tonight strengthens our ability to enforce and not weakens it. So I just want to kind of understand your, a little better your opposition. So maybe, maybe that's something to deliberate once we get past the questions on the question stage. So I'll table that until, when we get there. And then I would do have some other additional comments that I'll say during the comment period.
I'll go with Councilmember Hamilton and bring that topic back because what I think about is one lot in particular. And this, well, I'm thinking of one that we talked about. And there is that concern because it was brought up and it was brought up by, at least I know both of us. And we would go back and say, yeah, but, and then there seemed to be no urgency, and I don't mean on staff's part, I mean on the person who owns the lot. And I think that, I can't even remember now, but how long it took. But it was something that, I know we had talked about. And so I think that's where the councilman and the, and I think Councilmember Hamilton too is trying to go was like, how do we assure, because what we had wasn't working in some cases, not saying everybody, but I'm saying in, in those cases, it just took such a long time. And it, I didn't know if there was not enough, something behind it that said, hey, if you don't knock it off or clean it up, you're going to lose that right. So anyway, as Councilmember Hamilton said, we can talk about that. Are there public comments? This is a public hearing, so this is now the opening of the public hearing to hear. Please.
I have one speaker card.
Hi, everyone. So I'm making comment tonight on this item about some zoning code changes. I'm just so excited to see that the city is taking action on streamlining certain processes that I felt really bogged me down when I worked here. I felt like, you know, we had senior-level staff who were doing reviews on single-family homes. And you go to other communities, I work in larger communities and you'll see, you know, people that are assistant planners that are going and, and doing things administratively that, you know, here they, they wouldn't even be doing anything close to that. So I think it's good for opportunities for career growth for planners here, which is really awesome. I'm also excited to see, I think just that it's going to free up some staff time. And like I made in my last public comment, I really would like to see more people, to see council and planning commission rolling up your sleeves and diving into the housing element and, you know, setting checkpoints and diving into ways that we can promote programs or partner with the county. Because I know there's limited staff capacity for smaller cities, but we need to build units. We need to build affordable units. We need programs that are going to prevent displacement. And on the, on the conditional use permit side of things, again, I think it's great that we're streamlining processes. One thing that I was a big, I know that you said something about allowing commercial food, food and commercial areas. One of the things that we tried to work on, my colleague and I, when I was here was food trucks. And there was opposition from small business owners and some of those small business owners went out of business. They blocked food trucks, but then their business failed anyways. So to me, I, I think, you know, as a millennial, we're going to San Francisco, but we could be, you know, we could be getting YouTubers to be, you know, using underutilized commercial spaces and bringing food trucks in and supporting that. It also lowers barriers to entry for small business owners and entrepreneurs and people who want to open up a restaurant, but maybe don't have the money for brick and mortar. I really think that promoting things like that, that's the extra time that you're going to get by streamlining this process. You can get the policy tweaks right because, and you can have those conversations with Public Works about public space versus private space and how to properly regulate, like other communities have done this, they have programs in place. I think San Bruno, this is going to allow San Bruno to be more innovative, more competitive. It's going to be good all around. So I highly support streamlining some of these processes because I think it's going to bring the community forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers?
I have no other speaker.
Okay. This is the last call for the public hearing portion on this item. Seeing and hearing none, do we have a motion to close public hearing? hearing none. Do we have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll move we close public hearing.
Motion, Hamilton, Second Alvarez, to close public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Four oh. And now we'll bring it back to colleagues for comments.
Through the mayor, if I can just make a, I just want to make a quick comment to the last speaker. I appreciate your comments and agree with your enthusiasm for these changes. You may want to go back to the YouTube recordings of our meetings from last year. There were, we've had several joint sessions between city council and the planning commission. I served on the planning commission before coming to council, and I agree that we needed to be spending more time getting deeper into the housing element, and that's what we did in those sessions. So you may want to go back and watch those recordings to see kind of how we got to where we are today. Those were things, those were items that took place late last year, or middle of last year through late last year. Sure. So before we get into the temporary use permit, I just want to make a comment. I'm very much in favor of all these changes, but I'm in particular very excited about the modernization of the public notice process. It was very, very clear in our joint session with the planning commission that everyone on both the planning commission and on council are in favor of improving this process, and I'm glad that we can make this change as early as July 1. And I would, and I, you know, I do like that the planning commission is already planning for a study session to discuss those adjustments, and I trust our colleagues on the planning commission to monitor the effectiveness of the program as we put it in and bring any needed changes back to us as appropriate. So that's my comment on that. So I would like to go back and discuss again Councilmember Medina's concern regarding the temporary use permits. And I really just kind of want to get a better understanding of, given that right now there's no requirement for a use permit at all, how adding that requirement is something maybe you would oppose.
So I believe what had happened was that the use permit wasn't being heard from the planning commission anymore or the council, that the permitting of a construction lay-down yard was being administratively taken by staff. That's my belief. So I don't think there's a use permit allowed. It's just a different permitting process. So if we can get to that first part, because we don't hear it anymore, planning commission doesn't hear anymore, it goes, I believe the director has the authority to say a lay-down yard is acceptable.
So my understanding of this, and we did look into the documentation from, and I don't know exactly how long ago, but two or three years ago, the way the temporary use permits are structured in the current ordinance, if it's a temporary use for up to three months, it can be administratively acted on by the director. For up to a year, it has to go to planning commission, and there's no option of going over a year. And based on our review of the documents, the construction storage yards was taken out as a type of temporary use, because they would always be over three months.
Right.
So they would have to go to planning commission. And honestly, if it's a major construction site, or if it's staging for a major construction site, sometimes a year might not be enough. The amount of time it was taking to get through the planning commission led the people at the time to take away the requirement altogether. So our understanding at this point is that a temporary storage yard or staging yard for a construction project right now does not need any type of planning approval. The amendments would put that back, but it does allow it to be done for longer and allow extensions if there's satisfactory evidence that the project is proceeding in a timely manner. One of the other things that could be added to that language is that there's satisfactory evidence that the construction project is proceeding in a timely manner, and it is not causing visual blight, is not impacting neighborhood. More can be added to that, that can guide whoever is the decision-maker on whether it should be approved in the first place, whether it should ever be extended. The other thing is, with the amendments to the permits about reconsideration, if a temporary use permit, if any permit, is any operator is not meeting the intent of what, or is causing impacts, we can call it back to a hearing and either modify the conditions. If there's a public need, add conditions, maybe make certain things more stricter. Right now, we only have the ability to enforce the conditions as they are, or you revoke it. And so I think the combination of the two is going to give us more tools to address a lot of the issues that we've seen, and a lot of the issues that we've seen have come through complaints that the residents have brought forth to council members that you have passed on to us, and then we've gone through our regs. It's what can we do and what can't we? So in a roundabout way, I think the proposed ordinance changes is a good thing. I think the question for council is, do you want to raise the decision-making for this particular thing?
So for me, you want to go?
Oh, I was just looking at the mayor to be recognized, but if Hamilton wants to go first, again, go ahead.
I was just going to say, as I was watching, as Councilmember Alvarez looked in the back, and it was a resolution, Mark Zaffrono was here, and it was February 2022, and it was that the temporary use permits process for construction staging areas requires review by the planning commission increasingly the time required by developers and the city public works projects to obtain approval. And that's just, that was back in February of 2022, just to give some history. But anyway, go ahead. Thank you.
So I'm going to try to make a compromise here. I like the temporary less than three months. That's fine. Just go ahead and get your quick little project done. It goes administratively. But my experience has, is for the longer ones, they degrade pretty quick, because you make no money maintaining a construction yard. You make no money sweeping. You make no money cutting the weeds. You make no money abating the graffiti. It takes too long for things to happen at a construction yard for them to get fixed. And for that reason, I think it should, a temporary use permit for a construction storage yard should be approved by the city council to save the time of the planning commission. They're busy doing, you know, approving housing and all other things. But for this one piece, I believe to expedite the process that it comes to the city council.
Mr. Hamilton.
Through the mayor. So I just want to understand the process from the beginning. So we've got a brand-new project that's going up. They come to us for a temporary use permit to put in a construction yard. What benefit are we adding to the process by making this yard that doesn't even exist yet, and we have no idea whether there's, whether they're going to be squeaky clean or a giant mess? What value are we adding by having that initial approval come to us rather than be done administratively?
The outcome is, it will get approved, the temporary use permit, and then it will turn into a pigsty in a matter of months. And it's an enforcement thing.
Right.
So, but knowing that in advance, why would we allow certain lay-down yards in residential, abutting against residential areas? Would you want to be living next to a construction yard for months on end?
Well, of course not. And that's what, and you just hit the nail on the head. It's an enforcement thing. So what I think we should be focusing on here is what the director said regarding making sure that the language in the use permits is strong enough, saying that, you know, we're granting this use permit, provided that you keep it clean, you do, you know, abate graffiti, all these other things, maybe make, maybe strengthen them in a way where there's timelines. So, you know, once we, once we give you a notice that you must, that you have to, you have to fix these things within X number of days, make that very, very, very clear as part of the process. They can apply for the permit. The director can use discretion to approve the permit, and if they violate those rules, either because, and either because staff has noticed they violated it, or residents have come to us and we inform staff through the city manager that there's been a violation, they have a means, look, you agreed to this, you're not, and so we're giving you the notice, you go abate it. If you haven't done it through, within X days, now we're revoking your permit, clear it all out of here. That's how I see this working, and I don't necessarily, I think putting us into that process actually slows it down. It doesn't speed it up.
All right, all right. So very good points. Once again, it's always good to have an argument or a discussion with Tom Hamilton, I tell you that much. So you convinced me. So the automatic renewal, there has to be something in there that we're looking at the performance, regardless of the enforcement. As our mayor can tell you, we walked down the street repeatedly looking at these sites, and it wasn't improving. And that's just what happens. From my experience, lay-down yards just turn into pigsty. There's no point, and people just don't care, because they get to get in the car and leave, and the residents are sitting there facing it over the weekend, where they left the garbage container overfilling. I mean, they're just problematic. We shouldn't allow lay-down yards adjacent to residential areas. And then that goes into a zoning question, right? If we wanted to exclude that. So I'm trying to find a way to accommodate staff and a developer, a responsible developer, to do something and be respectful of the community. And it's very hard to find those developers who really care about what the neighborhood looks like Friday at 5:00. It's time to go home. And so we're seeing problems today with construction sites. And that's my experience. It just happens. The inspector leaves at 5:00, and the site looks like a junkyard all weekend. So I want to be able to find a compromise here to where we would allow them, but it's too easy, and the enforcement, you know, just doesn't happen. So how do we allow it? Or maybe what I'm really trying to say is, I don't think they should be allowed next to residential areas. We should stop it. So that's what I think. It shouldn't be allowed, because it's too problematic. And the majority of experiences of everyone in this room that has been on a construction site, they'll tell you, it's only a matter of time where you got to start hammering the contractor to tell them, hey, clean it up, clean it up, clean it up, and it just doesn't happen.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In my experience, the purpose of the ordinance that the staff is proposing is to speed up the process. In my experience, there are always conditions of approval in place once the staff approves an application. Another thing also that I've seen is, we do hold a, sorry, CND deposit, whereas if the contractor leaves the site, they do have a deposit that the staff can either keep or utilize to clean the work with recology and clean the site. So that's what I've seen in the past.
And I would agree that one of these proposals is to streamline. So I'm going to go with what Councilmember Hamilton was saying. I think that it has to be, it is, comes down to enforcement issue. But when it is complained, I mean, how, and I think that's the thing. So Councilmember Medina, this is probably beyond this as far as the neighborhood yards, but to this point, I can see having it come to us is another, elongates it. If they wanted to meet with us in August, there's one meeting, so it could delay that, and we want to streamline it. However, then I think it comes down to conditions and the enforcement, and that something gets resolved, and not, you know, we're trying, I think, especially when we talk about the neighborhoods and/or, you know, even when the train goes by and they're looking at a yard, kind of gives you where one is, and it's just like, it's unsightly. So anyway, I think you kind of get the gist, and yes, I'm sure you're more than happy to answer.
This is a, this is a very tough item, because on one hand, and interestingly enough, this allowance for the longer construction yards is only if the project being built is in the city. We wouldn't be the staging yards for projects happening elsewhere. The project being built in the city is a positive. The impact that the yard creates is generally not a positive. My recommendation is that we strike the language, we put the TUP back in, which the ordinance does, but we strike the language about the up-to-one-year-end extensions, and that council, you direct us with the next ordinance we bring back, which should be end of June. We bring a revised version of this section that, where we can go through and talk more about, okay, if these are the rules, what are enforcement options? How quickly do you think we can turn things around on such? And if it, it might end up being we come back recommending these same rules, but we say, here's our policies on how we're going to handle this, and council may accept that. Or we may change that. Can I share the screening? So is there council interest in that? Yes, sir.
I can get behind that.
Yep. And then while you're pulling that up, just...
I don't know why I'm looking over there. Following your eyes.
So they'll put the, so, well, it may be hard to read. This is subsection D of 12.84.030. This is section 59 of the ordinance. And if everything else in the ordinance is fine, maker of motion can move to approve the ordinance with the change that the text shown in red on the screen be removed from section 59 of the ordinance that you're adopting.
Let me give it a shot.
City attorney.
What I was going to suggest is just for clarity, that I read what the motion would be.
Okay.
Perfect.
I don't think any of us would mind that at all. And while you're looking at that up, I know about the social media was brought up, and I know that a lot of folks, it's a team, and everybody gets it out. And I want to acknowledge that Ashley is the person that was putting those items out. And so since she's been sitting with us last few meetings, it gives me my opportunity also to acknowledge her. City attorney.
Mayor Medina, the, and Councilmember Medina, the motion would be to consider introducing reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, amending Title 12, Land Use, Article 12, Subdivision, and Article 3, Zoning, to improve planning permit processes and other minor amendments and finding such actions exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act with the following change, which is to amend section 58 of the ordinance by amending section 12.84.030 regarding temporary uses in the municipal code, paragraph D, to eliminate the last sentence of paragraph D. I think that's all one sentence. Correct?
Yes, it is section 59, though.
Five nine instead of five eight.
Yeah. Yeah.
Fifty. I see. Yes. Section 59.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to introduce the ordinance as read by our city attorney.
I'll second that.
So, it's first as read by the city clerk with the amendment to it as read by the city attorney.
I think she read the whole thing.
Did you read the whole thing?
I read the whole thing.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. You're good.
I'm good. We would also, we could also add to the motion if the city council would like also to include and adoption of a resolution rescinding Resolution Number 1995-29 and Resolution Number 20-22, 2022-20.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to second it. Thank you for reading all that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0 passes.
I'd like to go on record that I partially won an argument with Councilmember Medina.
So noted. Item 8, Conduct to Business.
Item 8A, Receive Annual Military Equipment Use Report, Review the Military Equipment Use Ordinance, and Adopt a Resolution Renewing the Military Equipment Use Ordinance Number 1909.
Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Give me just a moment to get my screen share up while we get started. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I am Ryan Johansson, your chief of police, here to present the annual presentation on the renewal of the military, the renewal of the Military Equipment Use Ordinance. The objective tonight will be to receive the annual military equipment use report, review the military equipment use ordinance, and adopt a resolution renewing the Military Equipment Use Ordinance Number 2022-1909. The agenda will be to go through a brief background, just to remind council of the reason why we're doing this, provide a brief review of the existing military equipment use ordinance, receive the 2023 report on military equipment use, receive recommendations and alternatives, and of course, accept your questions and provide feedback. In terms of background, just as a reminder, it was California Assembly Bill 481, AB 481, and the California Government Codes 7070, 7071, and 7072 that were established requiring that a governing body provide its approval prior to taking certain actions regarding the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment in quotes as defined in those codes. This is accomplished per the code through the adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance, and it requires renewal of that authorization annually based upon an annual report delivered to you by the police department as to its use over that prior year. On March 1st of 2022, council approved the San Bruno Police Department's Military Equipment Use Policy in accordance with what I previously stated. On April 26th, 2022, council approved the Military Equipment Use Ordinance as codified in Title 2, Chapter 2.52 of the San Bruno Municipal Code. And this council renewed that ordinance following the same procedure we're following this evening in April of 2023. So, this will be your second renewal of said ordinance. As a reminder, in terms of the overarching spirit of AB 481, this originated based upon a program known as the 1033 Program. And this was a program through which police departments were able to acquire surplus military equipment and appropriate it to use in municipalities. To be clear, the San Bruno Police Department does not possess any equipment it ever obtained through the 1033 Program. It does not possess any equipment it obtained from the military. It does not possess any equipment that is designed for military use. A rewrite of AB 481 following its initial adoption resulted in significant expansion of the definition of military equipment. And in that expansion, there are 16 types of equipment listed, of which the San Bruno Police Department does possess four. Those are unmanned aircraft systems or drones, a command vehicle, patrol rifles, and a 40 millimeter launcher. A brief review of the existing ordinance, these are the sections, going through the highly relevant ones briefly. Section 2.52020 is the definitions section. Just as a reminder, we took the definitions directly from the language of California Government Code 7070 to ensure that we're compliant with those requirements. It essentially defines military equipment, and military equipment is defined by type. 2.52030 of the existing ordinance establishes the need for a military equipment use policy. This language also is taken directly from the government code, in this case, section 7071. It provides that the police department must bring to you a military equipment use policy for approval. This was completed on March 1st of 2022, and establishes what must be included in that policy, of which ours is completely compliant. Of note is an added section in our policy, in our ordinance 252040 that allows for use in exigent circumstances. This was established by council as critical to provide for public and officer safety for unknown circumstances that could occur in the nature of responding to emergencies. It provides for a very restrictive definition of exigent circumstances as a law enforcement agency's good faith belief that an emergency involving the danger of or imminent threat of death or serious physical injury to any person is occurring, has occurred, or is about to occur. And under those circumstances, your police department does have the authority to utilize equipment that is not included in your military equipment use policy or ordinance, or to use equipment that is within that policy outside of the uses stipulated in that policy, as long as we come to council within 30 days and report that use. There was no such circumstance in the reporting period that I'm bringing to you this evening. Section 252050 requires a report on the use of military equipment annually, and that's what we're essentially doing this evening. That language also taken directly from California Government Code, in this case, 7072. California Government Code 7071, Section B, requires the police department to post the military equipment use policy to its public website at least 30 days prior to public meeting considering it. This was accomplished via post to our website on January 26, 2022. That policy can be viewed at the link on the screen. Policy also requires, or law requires, that members of the public be able to register complaints or concerns, or to submit questions about the use of each specific type of military equipment in the policy, and these are the various means provided by the San Bruno Police Department. Requests and questions, inquiries can be sent via email to militaryequipment@sanbruno.ca.gov, of course, via phone call 24 hours a day, 365 days a year to our non-emergency line at 650-616-7100, and at any point in time via mail, conventional mail to the San Bruno Police Department, attention to the Military Equipment Use Coordinator. So, in terms of this year's annual military equipment use report, you have the full report included in your packet, but what is important to note is that there were no instances in which unapproved military equipment was used, nor instances in which approved military equipment was used in a manner not approved by the associated policies during this reporting period, which covered March 12, 2023 through today, March 12, 2024. Again, the full report with details of each equipment type and their uses during the year is included with your staff report. There is a new request this year, and the law does require that we come to council to request approval prior to acquiring new equipment that is designated as military equipment in the code. We are already in possession of and authorized to possess UAS or unmanned aircraft system drones as part of our standard emergency operations. This year, we are seeking council's approval to purchase two additional drone units. This is not requesting an appropriation. That will come through the budget. This is simply requesting authority to add two drones to the inventory within the military equipment use policy that you have viewed and approved. This is not any new technology in terms of what it does as a drone. They're simply smaller models that will better accommodate some of the uses we've uncovered over the last few years since we launched our drone program. Specifically, there's been a noted need for them to be utilized indoors, and obviously, our large enterprise drones are not effective at this. The batteries don't last long enough to use it in that fashion, and so the drone team has requested the ability to purchase some smaller drones. These drones will in fact not be commercial grade, so when we speak about military equipment, I actually believe that these would not qualify as military equipment under the policy, but in an abundance of caution, I'm coming to you in full transparency to let you know that we would like to be able to purchase them. So, the recommendation this evening would be for you as council to receive the annual military equipment use report and adopt a resolution renewing the Military Equipment Use Ordinance Number 2022-1909. As an alternative, you certainly could request additional information and/or modifications before renewing the ordinance. That concludes my report, and I'm certainly happy to field any questions.
Thank you very much, chief. Are there any questions on the report from colleagues?
So, I have just a quick, a quick comment before my question. So, just for everybody in attendance listening to this item, this is an item that tends to seem a little alarming when you first read it, and when you, and, but, I think the chief did a really good job of really explaining why this exists, that this is a, that this program is in existence to make sure that municipalities like ours are fully transparent in their, in their use of this type of equipment, and that they're held accountable, and we as a city are held accountable to report out on it every year. So, usually when this is on the agenda and I talk about it with people, the first thing people ask is, why are you buying military equipment? And the answer there is that the, as we've heard, the definition of military equipment is really, really broad in the, in the state law. And then, you know, unmanned drone used for search and rescue is counting as military equipment. And our mobile command post, which is filled with communications equipment so that, and is not armed in any way, is considered military equipment. So, I just wanted to just kind of lay that out for everybody, just so that we understand what we're talking about here. Regarding the new, the new drones being requested, are those ones that we would be able to share with fire, and would they be used for search and rescue and finding missing, you know, missing folks, that sort of thing as well? Or is it only for police uses?
Yeah. Excellent question. So, the drone program in San Bruno is joint as an emergency operations program with police and fire. So, all of the devices would be available for use in either case. I will say, in full transparency, the particular drones we'd be seeking this year would not be particularly useful for search and rescue, at least not in an outdoor space where we're typically conducting that type of an operation. These are essentially racing drones that are really, really small and usable for really short periods of time in small spaces. So, could still be very useful for search and rescue in the event that someone was within a building and lost, or if they were outside in some sort of, like down on a beach or in a cave or something and lost. But no, typically, these are going to be used for indoor operations.
Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on the presentation at this time? Can we, members of the public, please?
First speaker is Eleni Katut, followed by Matt Jones, followed by Amber A., followed by Neda.
Thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the show of democracy here tonight. It seems that there is a system in place where there are checks and balances, where your, the police department isn't allowed to make any purchases of military equipment without the knowledge, or without doing it in front of the public. So, it does show that San Bruno has value for democracy, and I think that our federal government should be held to that same standard. I just want to remind you all that Biden keeps bypassing Congress by selling weapons to Israel. And if these are your values, this is something that really should be alarming for you. If you don't care about the death of Palestinian children, at least maybe you can care about this, and you can chew on that when you go home and think about why you still haven't agendaized a ceasefire resolution. Yeah. It's not just like military equipment that we're using here that's being sold overseas. Israel's using dumb bombs that just fall on anything, and white phosphorus, and this is something that our country, that flag right there, that's what that represents right now. So, please think about this. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I just wanted to echo some of the comments of the previous speaker, and I just wanted to highlight something else that was shown in the report. There are, it is true what the chief is saying, that they're only requesting two drones, but what was unsaid, or maybe that wasn't highlighted as much, was that there's a number of equipment that the county owns that the city does have access to, and if you look at, it's page 328 is where it starts. It outlines all the criteria in which those things could be used. An example would be, they have flashbang grenades, explosive breaching tools, tear gas, and pepper balls, which it says is being used, could be used. It said capable of breaching doors, gates, windows, or other points of entry, explosive distractions, deploying tear gas or pepper chemicals. We've seen a lot of these things being used to disperse crowds in this, in the Bay Area, but across the country in particular by police forces. I think the increased militarization of police forces has a chilling effect on democracy. It has a chilling effect on people's rights to express themselves in public spaces, exercising First Amendment rights. So, that's my concern is, you know, in what situation would the SBPD be looking at trying to use flashbang grenades? Sure, there's probably a situation like sadly, an active shooter situation where that would probably make sense, but what about lawful peaceful protests for things like talking about what's happening in Gaza or Black Lives Matter? You know, I was at some of those. I was in a relationship with a black woman for three and a half years, and went through that process of what it was like for her to have curfew, when she had to drive home late at night, what it was like for her to have to leave her community in Walnut Creek. She, that's the decision I made to have her move in with me in Oakland, because I said, you know, she thought she was safe there, but they started bringing in tanks into downtown because they valued businesses over people. And she had to show up at checkpoints, and they kept pulling her over. So, she had to deal with racial profiling, and I think in this country, militarization is used to protect private profit over people's lives, especially people of color. I had to see that myself with my own eyes. I kept my phone next to my head every single night, hoping that she would not call, that she would not get pulled over by police, that she would not be hurt, and it changed my life. So, that's one of the reasons why I'm here today, showing up in solidarity with this community, because I think that we need to take a stand against police militarization and respect movements that are led by people of color. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello, city council. I echo what he said. It really touches close to home. I love a black person at home. They're my partner, and I'm very lucky to have them in my life. But I do experience what they experience in the world through their eyes, just being their partner, supporting them. And it is really, really hard to watch them have such fear, living their everyday life. Things aren't as safe for them as they are for me. I don't even have to think about certain interactions with that, that I have with people. I get to have the ability to be annoyed or irritated, and black folks don't get that without being violent. I hope that we can look into overpolicing of black folks. I'm now going to read off the names of children that didn't make it to their first birthday due to US military equipment that's allocated to Israel. Abed Al-Jawad, Abdel Khalil, Abdel Rahim, Abdel Rahman, Abdel Rauf, Abdel Karim, Abdullah Ahmed, Abdullah Amir, Abdullah Mohammed, Adam Magdi, Adam Mohammed, Ahmed Moim, Ahmed Mohammed Yazeer, Ahmed Mohammed, Ahmed Said, Ahmed Shadi, Ahmed Talat, Aliyah Abdel, Alma Adnan, Alma Muamin, Alma Kais, Alan Abdul. What I've just read to you are about 20 names of 40,000, 14,000 children murdered. What I'd also like you to know is that California is the third highest state in terms of military funding. So, I can assure you, whatever funds you put towards military equipment can afford to be reallocated to mental health resources for constituents living on an ongoing genocide.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
They don't need the drones. Don't buy them the drones. You guys already spend so much money on San Bruno Police Department every year, they don't need more money, they don't need more drones for search and rescue or whatever. He even said it wasn't going to be used in search and rescue, it's going to be used indoor. I don't know why you need an indoor drone. Don't buy them more military equipment. Don't approve any more drones. This interaction we just had outside with them was very, very, very unpleasant, and I would hate for them to have more weapons to hurt people with.
Are there any other speakers?
I have no other speaker cards.
No other speakers. Okay. With a couple of things, appreciate everybody's comments. This is a state law, chief, correct? So, everybody, correct? Yes?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. So, this is a state law that every city, town, and et cetera have to go through on an annual basis. It is true that the county DM or through the sheriff's department... It is true that the county DM, or through the Sheriff's Department, does have a variety of other options and things that are available. One reflects back to the YouTube shooting, the active shooter, where we did have something, it was a little camouflage that came in, and that was in case you had to go up with shots being fired in order to get folks out. So in that case, those are resources that are outside our jurisdiction in case of a situation like that. But also, wasn't it the fact, Chief, that that would have to be reported if there was certain elements that were triggered, it would come back and be updated? If I said that right?
So any use of equipment that's not permitted in the policy, or any use of equipment that is permitted in the policy outside of the parameters for their approved use, must be reported back to council within 30 days. In the three years that this program has been in place, there have been no such instances.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll bring it back to colleagues. Any comments? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you for the report. I want to acknowledge, reading the reports that the council does get when the drones are used to catch somebody who's done great harm in the area, and the need to be able to apprehend those that choose to not follow the law. I have full faith in our police department. I'm not aware of exactly what happened outside today. I believe that could have been avoided if we were able to provide additional notice. I can tell you that Matt Jones contacted me earlier today, or actually, that was yesterday. And I think with additional time, we would hopefully have been able to work something out. So with this topic here, this is something that I will support, that it's a reporting mechanism, and we do need to be able to have surveillance around our city, and when it's needed, we loan it out. I believe, Chief, that our officers still deploy the drone that they're trained for. So if I can just get that confirmation, is that true?
Yeah, I would say that at this point, better than half of our drone deployments occur via mutual aid request outside of the city. I could certainly give several examples. One that was very prevalent in the media would have been the recent plane crash just off the coast of Pacifica. That plane was located by a San Bruno police officer flying a San Bruno drone.
Okay. All right. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton. Okay, with that, this is an action item, and any action from council going to receive the report and military equipment use ordinance and adopt a resolution. Or is it read by the city clerk?
It was read by the city clerk. I make a motion.
There's no public hearing.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion Medina's, Second and Alvarez, to adopt the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to Item 9, Council Committee Reportouts. Are there any tonight? Nope. Let's move to Item 10, comments from council members. Councilmember Hamilton.
So there are a couple of events taking place downtown this Saturday, March 16. At the Bay Area Entrepreneurial Center, there's an event called San Bruno Vibes that's going on. This is a monthly event where several local artisans and vendors come together to sell their wares, and it's always a big hit, and I encourage everybody to attend if you can. That's on Saturday, March 16, from 11:00 to 3:00, at the Bay Area Entrepreneurial Center at 458 San Mateo Avenue in San Bruno. At almost the same time downtown, our wonderful downtown merchants are sponsoring an Easter egg hunt that starts at Twice as Nice at 559 San Mateo Avenue. This event takes place from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. on March 16, so you can attend both at the same time. And there's a whole list of our various vendors downtown that are participating, so the kids can see the Easter bunny at Twice as Nice, and then head down the avenue to a whole host of businesses to receive some treats. So encourage everybody to attend both of those things. And then I do have just another statement. I just, I want to take a moment to acknowledge our community that has been coming out consistently to our meetings since December. As we all know, in our first meeting in January, I tried but failed to gendize a peace resolution. Since then, I've had a lot of time to reflect on that decision, and dozens of additional conversations with residents, and it's important for me to share that I still believe that that was the correct decision. It was the correct decision then, and it would be a correct decision now. Since that meeting, the public calls for a ceasefire have only grown, including now from our president and from our vice president. And as a reminder, the council majority did not vote no on a ceasefire resolution, instead voted no on talking about it. So I just want to again acknowledge all of you here and reiterate to you that I am listening. I am trying my best up here to represent you and to represent the rest of our community. Thank you.
And for me, just a couple items. I wanted to acknowledge that the fire department received a Red Cross award in Menlo Park for their outreach and what they do in the various tasks. So I think we might have been the only fire department that was acknowledged at that awards. They do this annually, and again, the Red Cross, as you know, in a lot of the disasters or things we've had come out, and they're not paid, they just do it out of love, but this is an annual event they hold. And then I was at the transit district where there were three individuals that were acknowledged who are employees on the train, and that train that struck the unoccupied vehicle on the track, there were people that actually wrote in and complimented them for them keeping people calm and getting them off the train safely and evacuating. But one of them wanted it to be known, was very clearly wanted me to know that, please understand that the fire department responded so quickly, and I think maybe 33 minutes, was quick and was helpful and supportive in the public safety. So this person that did their job wanted to make sure that our public safety personnel were acknowledged for their job. So with that...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I didn't...
No.
He was blocking me.
Yeah, please.
All right. It's all good. Yeah, two things. Councilman Hamilton summarized it very well. To those in our audience, thank you for being here. I wish there was something that I could do to make it different, but I want you to know I'll share a story with, I'll share this. There's been two instances where somebody came up to me in public, just, "Hey, what's all that racket about, all that stuff with the ceasefire?" You know, and it's like, so let them finish, right? People have their say, and my response to both of them has been, "What would you do if it was your family?" And in both times, it was silence, because no one really even thinks about it, because it's so unimaginably horrid that this is happening. So thank you for being here. On a much lighter note, this Saturday, March 16, at City Park, Diamond 1, Tom Laura Field, San Bruno Youth Baseball will be having their opening day parade starting at 10 o'clock. I can guarantee you parking will be extremely limited, so if you can find a way, if you've got a youth player, or you just want to see the little ones, you know, they can barely hold a bat. And I remember that it's one of the best things about being here in San Bruno is the parade. So that's this Saturday, 10 o'clock. Thank you.
And thank you for mentioning that, because that was my next item, but girls softball does theirs annually, and the boys, they've already had theirs, and now the boys are doing theirs. And as my colleagues have said, your questions that you bring forward with the expertise and life experiences are helpful, and I make sure that we're answering these questions, because other people may have the same questions on the military usage and the questions that you folks bring up and bring forward. So I'm going to acknowledge that as well, and thank you. And with that, we are going to adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on March 26 at 7:00 p.m. Thus far, the meeting is adjourned.